Everyone, please rise and salute the flag. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 1st, 2015 meeting of the Revere City Council.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Riggo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Gignino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zamburdo is absent, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number one, the oath of office will be administered toward Ward One Councilor -elect Joanne McKenna.
Joanne.
Councilor-elect McKenna, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, using your own name after I say "I." I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as city councilor of Ward One for the city of Revere according to the best of my ability and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth. So help me God. Congratulations.
Do I get to keep the pen?
No.
Congratulations. The Council would like to say a few words, but I would just like to make one comment. This is a great day for Ward One and the city of Revere. I have known this young lady for several decades, more than I care to remember, and I know, in no doubt in my mind, that she will do an excellent job representing the residents of Ward One, whether it be Beauchamp or the Immaculate Area, and also the citizens of Revere in whole. Congratulations, Joanne.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So, I would first like to say that I'm sorry, Councilor Morabito, I stole your cheer, and I know you loved it. I just want to thank everyone who supported me and came out to vote. Your kindness and words of wisdom have been humbling and very overwhelming. A special thank you to my committee for their hard work and dedication in helping me with my campaign. Thank you to the city councilor, the mayor, for the warm welcome that they have given to me and the assistance in easing my transition. Because of my upbringing and my longevity in Revere, I have a deep respect for and a connection to the city and the people who reside here. I want to see the city prosper because I believe Revere has so much potential for growth, and I look forward to serving you all. I will work for you, my community, and give you 100% of my effort to try to improve Ward One and solve any problems that are presented to me. I will engage all my constituents by remaining visible and accessible, and will do my best on your behalf. Lastly, it would not be proper for me not to mention Richard Penta. I had the privilege and the honor of Richard calling me three weeks before he passed, graciously giving me his approval to run for his seat. I would like to thank him for that honor and the Penta family for their support. Thank you very much, God bless you all.
And you can be sure of that, she will do a great job. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number two, approval of the journals of the meetings held on May 4th, 2015, and May 18th, 2015.
Motion approved.
Calendar item number three, Revere Community Scholarship Program Chairwoman Catherine A. Romano will present the Revere Community Scholarship to this year's recipients.
Ms. Romano. Whatever you choose.
Go ahead, move this up, as long as they can hear me. All set to go?
All set.
Let's go. Committee members, good. Oh, the two people up here. These are the two, that's right, the two recipients. Want the recipients up here. Without the recipients, we wouldn't be giving the award. Come up here.
If you want to move this over a bit?
Yeah, so more of us can fit in. Here, why don't you?
Thank you.
Up and running, the 15th consecutive year. My name is Catherine Romano, and I am honored and humbled to be here tonight. I am the retired Whalen School principal. Because I know the value of an education, I am now volunteering many, many hours to this committee, and it turns out to be a lot of hours. I mean, when I first started, it seemed to be simple, but it's gotten bigger. Yeah, that's right. Unbelievable, but true. Fifteen years ago, standing here, I thought and said that this project, in my opinion, was a rising star for the city of Revere. I am thrilled to say now that Revere has risen and it's continuing to rise. Revere High, that's right, I really feel what it is, it's going up. Revere High is the best urban high school in the nation. I mean, that's really... First and foremost, I must thank all the people who donated to make tonight's scholarship awards possible. The scholarship money comes from donations. No tax money is used for these scholarships. This year, for the first time, because of all the people who have donated, because of increased donations, we are able to award two $5,000 scholarships. I know that's wonderful. There is an enormous need for scholarships. This year, the committee received 38 applications. Now, receiving this scholarship has enabled students to attend Boston College, Suffolk University, St. Anselms, Providence College, Northeastern University, University of Lowell, Stonehill College, Syracuse University, and the University of Massachusetts at Hamhurst. I am very, very happy to report that the recipients are doing very, very well in college. They're graduating summa cum laude, cum laude, and achieving the dean's lift and receiving internships. One of the students, two summers ago, received an internship in San Francisco, University of California, in San Francisco in biology. Another student was invited to England, to Oxford University, free of charge for tuition and whatnot. So, really, that's an accomplishment. It also shows that these committee members worked hard and made excellent selections, right? The selections were all A+. At this time, I must thank all the committee members for volunteering their time and effort. The committee members are Dr. Paul Dakin, who is superintendent of schools, and actually the law requires that the superintendent of schools be a member of the committee; Mr. George Anzoni, Revere's chief financial officer; Councilor John F. Powers; Carol A. Ty, the retired superintendent of schools; Dr. Gennaro Cataldo, I don't see him, he always comes, so maybe... Dr. Gennaro Cataldo is a local dental practitioner, and he's a Boston University professor; and the mayor, Dan Rizzo. Some background information, and I'll give you a few dates. 1993, 1994, 2000, 2001. In 1993, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts enacted into law Mass General Laws Title IX, Chapter 60. It's a statute claiming that any city or town can establish a community scholarship fund, the money to come from donations. No tax money is to be used. Although there are 351 municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not every city or town has a community scholarship program. Thus, I have to ask, how did this program become established in the city of Revere? Well, the late George V. Colaua, in his portrait is the last one, the third one, the last one right here, he was very, very concerned about Revere and extremely concerned about the youth of Revere. So, he was an avid reader, and he saw in his reading that the city of Newton had started this program in Newton. So, he figured, why not try it in the city of Revere? Now, the late George V. Colaua was first elected to the school committee in his twenties, he was attending BU. Then he became a councillor-at-large. He served 20 years as mayor of the city, and then returned to being councillor-at-large. In 1994, Councilor George V. Colaua and Councilor Powers submitted a motion that was approved by the entire city council that Revere establish a City of Revere Community Scholarship Award. And it became a city ordinance after councillor Robert J. Haas Jr., who was mayor at the time, signed it into an ordinance. So, the City of Revere Scholarship Program was put into motion by really two people, Councilor Colaua and Councilor Powers. So, at this time, I am going to ask Councilor Powers to tell us more about how this thing got going.
Thank you very much, Catherine. Before I do that, I want to make a comment about this young lady next to me, to my left.
That's me.
That's Kay Romano.
That's what I mean.
And when we started this, revised this scholarship fund, we asked Catherine Romano if she would sort of keep notes. Well, she's done a lot more than keep notes. She's helped us raise over $52,000 during the past 15 years. She has kept meticulous records, and you'd have to be at one of the meetings when we decide who's going to get the scholarships, and look at those records to know the effort and the work that Catherine puts into this. Catherine is a person who also has put 45 years into the Revere school system, working with children her entire career. And for the past 15 years, she has worked on the scholarship committee. So, there's a woman with 60 years giving to the city of Revere and still living in the city of Revere and not leaving the city of Revere and helping the children of this city for 60 years. There was a time back in 2000 when George Colaua and myself were attending the graduation exercises, and we noticed that there was no scholarship given for the community scholarship, it was dormant. And following a few days, we checked and we found out that there was, George, what, $13,000 or $14,000 just lying dormant in the scholarship fund. So, we decided to revise it. And at that time, Mayor Ambrosino was on the committee, Dr. Cataldo, Dr. Dakin, George Anzoni, and myself and Catherine and Carol Ty, our superintendent. And we put the committee together and we started raising money. Well, again, as I said, over the past 15 years, we've given out over $52,000 to help students continue in higher education, and I think that's a tremendous thing on part of Catherine and the committee, but also on the citizens of this city that sent in those fives, tens, fifties, hundreds, and even much, much more. Some of them sent in thousands of dollars, there's a few of them. And that's just a great thing. So, with that said, I'd like to have Damon and Jennifer come up here, they're here behind us, they're going to say a few words, but before that, I'd like to have Mayor Rizzo say a few words.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. This is always a great night up here, as Kay Romano indicated, it's been 15 years, and I was a member of that city council when you co-sponsored the motion with George Colaua, and it's just been such a tremendous program. I want to, just before I say a couple brief words, congratulate Joanne McKenna on her selection for the city council. As much as I know, a lot of us obviously are going to, and certainly do, day-to-day miss Richie Penta, Councilor Penta, I can't think of a better fit for somebody to represent Ward One, so I know you're going to do a great job. And I see your supporters out here that have been by your side all the way, so I'm sure they're very, very proud of you, and we are too, so congratulations. And I'd like to thank members of the committee. My name was mentioned here, but I can't tell you how small a role I played. It can't get much smaller. But to the committee, Kay Romano, Carol Ty, George Anzoni, Councilor Powers, and Dr. Cataldo, they analyze these applications in incredible detail. I mean, they really do. There's a lot of criteria that they use, so Damon and Jennifer, who are the recipients of these scholarships here tonight, ought to be extremely proud of themselves, and their families that are here with them should be extremely proud of them because they obviously had to earn it. They don't give these scholarships away, they treat these dollars that come in from taxpayers as if it's their own. And they make sure that these dollars are spent, while there's obviously many worthy candidates, they take such great pains to make sure that they've selected the candidates based on a whole wide variety of criteria. But safe to say that anybody that contributes to this program should know that their money is being put to excellent use. We've got some great, over the years, we've had great candidates that have gone on to do great things, and I have no doubt that Damon and Jennifer are going to go on to do great things. So, I want to really thank the taxpayers that allow this program to continue, because without their support, we can't all be standing here taking care of kids like Damon and Jennifer and the ones that have come before them. So, I'd like to just encourage the public to continue with their support. We know what a supportive community this is. I saw it firsthand last year when the tornado struck and we were able to raise over a quarter of a million dollars to support our neighbors here in the city of Revere. That's the type of community that we live in. We look after one another and we take care of each other, and this is yet another program that demonstrates that, how we look after our kids who had the opportunity to, as Kay Romano said, go through some of the best schools that the state of Massachusetts knows. As you know, last year, 2014, the National Center for Urban School Transformation ranked Revere High School as the number-one high school in the nation, an incredible honor. But you can see why that honor was bestowed upon the school when you see kids like this here. So, I want to thank the committee again, I want to thank the people that helped make this possible through their contributions, and encourage them to keep doing it, because it's helping the children of our community in such great ways that we're actually, 15 years later, seeing those benefits and seeing the payoffs of that. So, thank you all for having me participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Rizzo. And I have to agree with Mayor Rizzo, we would like to have the contributions coming in, and again, I have to thank you. And the next real estate tax bill will be arriving July 1st, but for people who want to donate, I have plenty of these forms.
Well, we didn't really need to mention that.
And actually, you don't have to live in Revere. As a matter of fact, we're getting donations from people out of Revere and out of state.
Yes.
Some of them from out of state are donating. So, anyone, I have plenty of these forms with me for anyone who wants to donate. Okay, now, the big moment has come. I'll begin with Damon Kell. And why don't you tell us, this is a $5,000 reward, and please tell us what your future plans are.
I'm sorry.
Oh, he wrote a speech, must have written a speech.
All right. Hello, everyone, how you doing today? I'd like to first express my gratitude for everyone that showed up today. I thank you. And I'd like to first mention my gratitude for my family for always being there, showing up, and expressing how much you care. Don't cry.
And which school are you going to attend?
I'm proudly attending UMass Lowell in the near future and pursuing my endeavors to become a mechanical engineer. I'd like to share a memory of my senior year, being an alumni from Revere High School, sitting back my third-period class in Mr. Kingston's AP Government class. He once stated to us, he's glad that we're all successful in our own way and we're becoming, we're doing what we want, but to never forget who helped us get there. And tonight, I'd like to thank even more people besides my family. I'd like to thank the city itself for providing me a home and everything it's done for me. Thank you for the scholarships, thank you for the opportunity, because I am a firm believer that money itself is not an obstruction for education. I'd like to thank my brother for putting up with all these hard years, and maybe I can be harder than you, but you don't really have to live up to my expectations and do what you feel is right for you, pursue your dreams without having to feel what anybody else thinks. I'd like to thank my friends in the community of Revere High School for being the best they can be and practically a second family for me. I'd like, I'm so sorry. But with the plans, with the scholarship, I plan to use it towards my tuition and books, like I said, not to deter me from getting what I want, and what I want is to give back to this community, not to forget it, be successful, come back, and show them what I'm capable of and what I'm capable of doing. I'm sorry.
That's wonderful. Wonderful, everybody. Thank you. Mrs. Field?
Thank you so much.
And now, $5,000 to Jennifer Mata.
First of all, I would like to thank my mother for always being there for me throughout this 40 years of high school and encouraged me to do better in school. I would also like to thank the city of Revere for awarding me with this amazing scholarship. I'm truly honored to have received this scholarship, and I assure you that I will put it to good use. This scholarship is going to be of great help to me when I go to Assumption College, where I plan to major in engineering. Receiving this amazing scholarship proves that all the struggles I went through since I came to this country to receive a better education were worth it. I am proud to say that in freshman year, I was only in English language learning classes, but every year, I kept on moving up to higher level courses, and this year, I took advanced placement classes. This wouldn't have been possible without all the teachers who encouraged me throughout these four years of high school to improve and overcome my fear of failing and therefore moving up to harder level classes, which I was able to pass with As and Bs. And now, receiving this scholarship makes me feel proud and honored. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo?
Yes. Your parents?
Yeah.
My egg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo?
Yes.
Your parents?
Yeah.
My egg.
Kids, get up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo?
Yes.
Your parents?
Yeah.
My egg.
Kids, get up here.
Thank you.
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 Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you. Thank you. Could we have the parents of these children come up here for a photo? Yes. Jennifer.
Yeah.
My yeah. Well. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I have a personal privilege?
Certainly, Councilor Ego.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, earlier, or last week, um, Revere lost a true legend. Um, Joe Bianco Senior passed away, uh, and he, uh, everybody knows the name, um, and I can't, uh, say enough about how thoughtful and how important he was to, to my wife and to my family. Um, and, uh, the fact that he had fifty-five years of business in the city and is, uh, known, everybody knows that the best sausage around is a Bianco sausage. So, I wanted to take a moment of silence and, and, um, uh, take a minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ego. I'll sit.
Calendar item number four, communication from the planning board relative to the recommendation on the zoning map amendment of Lot 120, American Legion Highway from RB to GB.
Please don't file.
Can it be made part of the resolution?
Yeah. Yeah.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the adoption of the Revere Hazard Mitigation Plan 2014 Resolution.
Please don't file.
No. No. Chief Tardy, are you here for, okay.
You don't have to state your name and address. I know where you live.
I didn't plan on it. I'm like, I, I only, I'm speaking with the mayor, uh, only because, uh, myself and Frank Stringy have been involved with this since, uh, 2011, I'm sorry to say. Your Honored Body approved the original, uh, plan to go forward with a, uh, hazard mitigation plan for the City of Revere. Uh, we went with MAPC. Uh, they were the agency that was hired by MEMA at that time through FEMA for all the communities to do these hazard mitigation plans with the idea that you would have a set generic plan for a good portion of your city and then your kind of wish list of things that, uh, you wanted to see done, uh, to mitigate any problems and things that had to be done. Uh, this went through a long process. Uh, the first, the original person that was assigned to us, um, for whatever reason, kind of fluffed a lot of our streets and we kind of mixed things up and we had to go back to square one. And, uh, over a period of time, we identified all the different hazards within the city and we identified everything from daycare centers to critical infrastructure and things such as that so that everything is on this master plan and a map and it has, uh, what is, involves of the city. What this resolution that we're here, the mayor and I are here before you tonight is for the, we need the council to adopt the plan that's finally been approved by FEMA, um, for us to go forward. And if we don't get your, um, support on this resolution, and that will inhibit us from applying for grants. There's not a great deal of grant money under this hazard mitigation, but there is some and Revere's been successful in the past by getting some grants. This current, uh, year for just one of the programs is only a hundred and fifty million dollars across the country. That's not a lot of money. Um, we do have some, Frank in particular is more, uh, involved with the actual plans we had, but originally, one of the, uh, was the Taft Street project that was constantly inundated. Um, we have plans in the plan for, uh, additional, uh, pumping stations, um, throughout the city and upgrades to the existing title gates and things such as that. And it's all predicated on the fact we have it, we're asking for it, and do we get granted the, the grant funds? Um, and just recently, the, uh, because of the storm, they actually threw a little more money into the pot to apply for. Um, and it's, uh, there are four grant programs that we'll, different ones that we'll apply for. It's hazard mitigation grant, uh, pre-disaster mitigation grant program, flood mitigation, and, uh, three, I'm sorry, I apologize. Three, three programs that we'll be applying for different aspects of problems within the city. Um, I would, if you have any questions, I have the resolution that the, uh, city clerk can read too out loud and, and we'll go from there.
I just have one question, Chief. Uh, you mentioned, uh, tide gates.
Correct.
Uh, will any of this money be used for that? Uh, I know they've heard the mayor talk about a second tide gate down at the Oak Island area, uh, to back up the one on the B and M tracks.
These are all in the plan. There's everything, uh, from, uh, the tidal gate plans to, um, pumping stations to, uh, a brush truck to handle brush fires in North Revere. So, it's kind of a, what's everything possible we could ask for, for the city to mitigate any future problems? And part of these things are, uh, part of the programs, uh, you can't just, it's not to correct, uh, things that you haven't been lax and taken care of. It's for a new plan to do, you know, a plan to redo a whole new culvert, uh, something like that. So, there's, it's, I'll get a copy of it. Frank is gonna be handling most of it through the mayor's office and, uh, we'll decide, um, what we think is the best suited to go after based on what the competition is for this upcoming funding cycle.
Thank you, Chief. That's certainly good news, I know, for the residents in those areas that are impacted by stormwater. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, I just have one question of the chief.
Councilor Eiden.
Thank you. As, Chief, as I understand it, and then correct me if, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, that this is essentially, this mitigation plan is essentially a mandatory prerequisite before you can even apply for these grants. Is that accurate?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Very accurate. If we don't get your body to approve it, we can't apply for it.
Right. Thank you.
And you originally, the council originally, uh, set us forth to do the plan back in 2011.
Thank you, Councilor Eiden. Mr. Mayor?
Actually, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, what Councilor Eiden just asked was basically what I was gonna say was that by approving this, it doesn't mean money for the City of Revere. It just means it gives us the ability to apply for money. There's a hundred and fifty million dollars right now that's available across the country. So, I mean, if it was just Massachusetts, it'd be one thing, but, um, so as the chief alluded to, not a lot of money, but money that we'll have access to if you approve this plan. Um, and, uh, you mentioned the tidal gates in Oak Island. That's, you know, of course, if we were to receive funding through this hazard mitigation plan, we could absolutely use it for that, but I'm committed to fixing that problem and putting a safeguard in Oak Island anyway, regardless of our ability to get money here. That's something that I'd like to see us do, maybe through SRF funds that are, you know, money that's approved to, you know, to keep in compliance with our consent decree. So, I wanna go forward with that anyway as a backup measure to the other, uh, tide gate that unfortunately, uh, has failed a couple of times on us. So, as much as we try to maintain them, uh, it's always good to have a backup. So, uh, I wanna thank the chief, uh, and Frank Stringy for their hard work on this plan. Uh, it's been going on since 2011. As you can imagine, it wasn't any easy task, and really, they should be applauded for the hard work that they put into this because, uh, you know, without it, we wouldn't be at this point that it's before you to approve. So, uh, just wanna congratulate them on that.
Thank you, White. I know that the chief does an excellent job at the fire department, and I know Frank Stringy does an excellent job up at, uh, planning and community development, and, uh, we're very fortunate to have both of those individuals working out there for us. Thank you.
Chief, request that be read up to the record?
Read it into the record, please.
The resolution adopting the City of Revere Hazard Mitigation Plan 2014 update. Whereas the City of Revere established a committee to prepare the City of Revere Hazard Mitigation Plan 2014 update, and whereas the City of Revere Hazard Mitigation Plan 2014 update contains several potential future projects to mitigate potential impacts from natural hazards in the City of Revere, and whereas a duly noticed public meeting was held by the city council on August 29th, 2011, and whereas the City of Revere authorizes responsible departments and/or agencies to execute their responsibilities demonstrated in the plan. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Revere City Council adopts the City of Revere Hazard Mitigation Plan 2014 update in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4, or the Charter and Bylaws of the City of Revere. Councilor Ego?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Bearden?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes. The resolution has been adopted. Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor requesting time of the June 8th, 2015 city council meeting to recognize Rosina T. Kitty Bowman on her retirement from MGH and Revere Cares.
That's fine.
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by councilors Haas, Morabito, Ego, and Powers that the mayor request the DPW to install drug-free zone signage at the Oak Island Park and any other city park that does not already have drug-free zone signage.
Councilor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we went to a meeting at the Jack's Adderhouse pertaining to the Oak Island Playground, and at that point in time, the people were concerned because there was no drug-free zone signs. So, uh, what we like to do is to put it there and anywhere else is a playground that requires a drug-free zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ego?
I think Councilor Haas spoke for me. I, uh, think that we, uh, heard about this issue at a public meeting and, and it's a quick, it should be a quick fix. Thank you.
Councilor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, if my fellow colleagues on this motion have no issues with me making an amendment, I would just like to replace drug-free, free zone with drug and alcohol-free zone.
No problem. Yeah. And actually, I'd like to see these placed in every park in the city to make people aware that. Councilor Gino?
Thank you. As the Chair of Youth Parks in Rack, I fully support the motion. I think it's a great idea on behalf of my colleagues, and I think that it is definitely something that we should have at all of our parks and something really we should have right when you come into the city because it's something that we should have citywide, but it's a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gino. Councilor Guanasso, did you?
I'd like to see this simple amendment as possible based on the fact that, uh, the activity's gonna start occurring very soon, and we need to have this signage there to at least give the, uh, police officers an opportunity to, uh, stress that this is part of our bylaws and we have to go forward. And I, and I note that the Parvira School Park would be one, uh, spot that would be perfect for this particular.
I think every park in the city should have this.
I do too. I do too. But I think Parvira School should, uh, because it's in the back and not seen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councillors on the motion? So ordered.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor request the police department to monitor and enforce traffic regulations to include speeding on Harris Street.
I, uh, I had occasion, uh, last week to go and visit a resident up there with, uh, John Festa. And during the short ten or fifteen minutes we spent up there, uh, there were probably a half a dozen violations, cars just flying up over that hill. And, uh, it's very dangerous. The, the, anybody that knows Harris Street knows when you come up from the, uh, bottom, uh, you hit the top, there's a rise there, and you cannot see any cars that are speeding up there coming at you. It's, it's very dangerous. It has to be corrected. I would ask that the, uh, the police department monitor it. Maybe we have to write out some violations up there to educate people and let them know that it's not acceptable. And, uh, if that's what has to happen, uh, let's do it. Maybe there has to be, uh, some changes with the traffic department too because people, you know, are taking their lives in their hands. You got a lot of people that are trying to beat the, uh, traffic at Bell Circle, and they, well, they shouldn't. There's a sign up there. They take Harris Street and come right up. So, maybe when they get to a certain point, they should be stopped and have a ticket written for them. Okay? Any other councillors? Councilor Patch?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to go on the fence for the, on the police department, uh, second here on one of your statements. I know for a fact that, um, Sergeant, Sergeant Rose, under the direction of Sergeant Gino, um, I've, had written, uh, many tickets up, up there. I mean, they, they just can't be there all the time.
No, I, I understand that fully.
I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
No, I understand. They, they do their job, uh, was, we're just limited in personnel. It's, it's hard.
The traffic, yeah. The traffic division up there is, there's not too many in the, uh, traffic division.
I'd like to see it happen, you know, maybe for, uh, a day or two, a couple of hours each day, write out enough tickets and maybe they'd get the message. On the motion, all in favor, so ordered.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilor Powers that the mayor direct the appropriate department to make repairs to the roof and the facade of the youth center building at 105 Beet Street.
and you look across the street, there's a big hole in the facade. The roof is all torn apart. And I suspect, and I know as a matter of fact, this is from the hurricane last year. And I just, I've spoken with the Director of Recreation, and I just, I can't understand for the life of me why this still exists as it is. Because I worked in that building for 23 years, and we kept the building in good shape with the little resources that we had. And I think that somebody should get down there, assess the damage, and make sure that it's taken care of within the next week or so. I don't see any reason why it can't be. It's not that extensive, but it's to the average person driving through our city and looking up at that building. You know, I know if it were me coming from another city, I'd say, you know, what's, you know, what's wrong with these people? Why hasn't this been fixed? I've looked at it now for a year. So I would hope that we would take care of that. Any other councillors want to speak on this? Councilor, do you want to speak on it? On the motion, all in favor, so ordered.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councilor Patch that the mayor direct inspectional services to issue a notice of violation of city ordinances to the owner of 41 Liberty Avenue. The property in its current condition poses a public safety hazard and is in eyesore in the neighborhood.
Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been an ongoing problem for a few years. It goes back to the prior, actually, two prior head of the building inspectors. They put a foundation up and found out that the, it wasn't even, didn't even have enough land to have a house there. So, and it's just turned into a public safety area where the overgrowth is, it looks like a jungle. I also, Mr. President, I'd like to amend this also to that the inspection services also look while they're up in the area on the corner of Grand View Ave and Agatha Street. I couldn't get a house number, but it's the corner house. They'll see it because there, in the front yard, there's a, there's a big pile of bricks and stones, and it, they also should be either fined or have them clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I think, you know, I think this will happen now. We have the new ticketing law in effect. And I'm sure once this motion meets the inspectional services department, they'll get right out there and take care of this. On the motion, all in favor, so ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councilor Haas that the city council award David Doc Gall, owner of the Winthrop Farms, with a certificate of commendation on behalf of the citizens of Revere for his efforts in keeping Revere Beach clean. During his walks along Revere Beach here around, Doc removes trash from the beach, setting an example for other beachgoers, and in doing so, makes Revere Beach a clean and enjoyable recreational area.
Councilor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, I believe, long overdue. David's been cleaning the area whenever he walked for at least eight years that I know of. And I'll have more to say at the presentation of the...
Thank you, Councilor. I think it's an excellent motion. You know, anytime we can get someone from Winthrop to come in and help us clean Revere Beach.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great thing. Too bad we couldn't get a few more.
Our own people, right?
Yeah. I see him down there every morning. He's always walking around with papers in his hand.
Yeah, absolutely.
On the motion, so ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by councilors Arigo, Janino, Morabito, and Haas that the mayor draft a letter to Win Mass LLC requesting the following: a job fair exclusively for Revere residents, a vendor fair exclusively for Revere businesses, and that a meeting be scheduled to discuss a mitigation package to compensate the city of Revere for the various impacts the Win Mass LLC casino in Everett will have on the residents of Revere.
Councilor Arigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know this is a sensitive topic and a difficult conversation to have. And a lot of us have a lot of different emotions about the last few years and what transpired between the city and Caesar's and Suffolk Downs and the Gaming Commission. But I think it's time that we move on. I think it's time that we get past the decision that was made last fall, and we start to think about how we can protect our residents. Because there is no doubt that there will be negative impacts on the city of Revere. You can throw a stone to Everett from Revere, and the fact that we haven't secured any kind of protection for our residents is difficult to imagine. But the fact that we do have a, I know people will say that we have a lawsuit against the Gaming Commission and that the Win project may fail. And that may happen. That may not happen. But I will remind folks that two other communities that have lawsuits against the Gaming Commission, who are opposed to the Win proposal, they both have mitigation agreements. City of Boston is going to get $50 to $75 million. The city of Somerville is going to get about $10 million. So the fact that we don't have any protection, we don't have any guarantee of jobs, we don't have any guarantee of the amount of vendor contracts that Win has to spend. They have to spend $125 million a year. And we're not, there are going to be no Revere companies that take advantage of that. So unless we kind of get over it and start to think about how we can protect our residents, we're going to be left with nothing. And in my mind, this is a no-brainer, and we have nothing to lose. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Arigo. Councilor Janino?
Thank you. My colleagues stated many of my ideas on the motion, and I do believe that it's an important motion. I think that all of us wanted the best for Revere, and we didn't get it. So we really need to put something in place that does protect our residents. The bottom line is, this is going to impact our city. The traffic is going to impact our city. Our roads are going to be impacted. Our businesses will be impacted. And if it's going to be this close, we need to take advantage of the best options that we have for our residents and for our community. So I think that it definitely gets a conversation started, and it puts us in the right direction for moving forward and figuring out what's next for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janino. Councilor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I truly believe there is no harm in this motion. It allows the city, it provides the city an opportunity to effectively negotiate with Win if this passes. It provides an opportunity for our citizens to apply for jobs. It also gives our city the opportunity to gain revenue. And what's the worst-case scenario? They say no. We have nothing to lose. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Morabito. Councilor Haas?
Thank you, sir. What this opportunity does as far as opening up employment to the community, you look at Suffolk Downs, there's a lot of talk about Suffolk Downs people, they rallied the people time in and time out, and since the award to Everett, it seems like everything has died. So I want to try to jumpstart this. Looking at the mitigation package which we didn't apply for, I think we have to really get down and start some dialogue between us and Win. Because if we don't get our foot in the water, we're going to get absolutely nothing except traffic. And I honestly believe this is the motion, a motion looking at our future, and I think we have to act now. We have to act as fast as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Haas. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Patch has the floor.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Mr. President. I sort of disagree with this motion. Because I put together some facts here. And under the Gaming Act and the Gaming Commission regulations, the time has passed for Revere to obtain surrounding community status for the Win project. Even without surrounding community status, Revere may be eligible for community mitigation fund payments from the Gaming Commission as a result of the Win project. Now, through the mayor and his administration, the Mass Gaming Commission had, they had, they had a great program for cities impacted by gaming. Revere has applied to the initial phase of the grant. And on the, and they had a community mitigation fund application that they, that they apply, that they, they sent in before the February 2nd deadline from the mayor in the city of Revere. And I'll just read one, the impact description. In the application, the city of Revere believes that the establishment of a gaming facility in Everett will impact traffic flow from Route 16 and Route 1. Because of these impacts, the city would use community mitigation dollars through traffic, public safety, and land use mitigation. So the administration is, is still fighting to get funds from the Mass Gaming Commission. Also, if the appeal of the Win license is successful, there will be no Win project. And any mitigation agreement with Win will be null and void. Boston has refused to cut a deal with Win while litigation is pending. With this statement, I know I've been following for several weeks in the Boston Herald and the Boston Globe, that they have added to their lawsuit, and they, to be honest with you, several months ago, I felt that there was a very slim hope of Win not being successful. But I tell you, since reading these articles, I feel that, a little stronger, that this might happen. And I also want to state that Boston has no surrounding community agreement or any type of agreement with Win. Boston originally had a surrounding community status for the Win project, but was stripped of the status by the Gaming Commission when Boston refused to participate in arbitration with Win. The Gaming Commission was legally prohibited from issuing a license to Lynn if Win had no surrounding community agreement with Boston. To get around this problem, the Gaming Commission charged, changed the facts and stripped Boston of its surrounding community status. They did cave out in the Win license, allowing Boston to enter a post-licensed surrounding community agreement with Lynn only applies to Boston. Now, I want to get to Revere's contractual obligations, the host community agreement we have with Mohegan Sun. Revere's HCA with Mohegan Sun is still in effect. Revere is contractually prohibited by the HCA from entering a host or surrounding community agreement with any other gaming company. Mohegan Sun has continued honor the terms of the Revere HCA reimbursing Revere for all project expenses. Revere HCA was the most lucrative in Massachusetts, with the sole exception of Boston's defunct agreement with Suffolk Downs.
Point of information, Mr. President?
I'm not done yet. Everett, Everett HCA may well result... I'm not done yet. Everett HCA may well result in a tax break for Win, as the estimated property taxes on Win buildings will likely exceed the annual payments due to Everett under Everett's HCA with Win. So, with all due respect, we're still under agreement with Mohegan Sun. The mayor is, and administrators are listening to the lawyers, the same as Boston and Somerville. And hopefully, we could get some, we'll have success by doing that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Under our laws, our rules, the makers of the motion can speak a second time. Did you want to speak, Councilor Arigo?
Yes, please, Mr. President.
Excuse me. Are other councillors going to be allowed to speak? Councilor Zambudo, certainly.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me just start off by saying that I represent the city of Revere, and of course, the taxpayers. I like to look at my role up here as first do no harm. By first doing no harm is, we're in litigation right now over this, with, joined with Somerville and Boston. And there's a, there's a substantial chance that the Win project will never take off. I've heard rumblings that the governor is unhappy with the procurement procedures and the illegal activity that took place when the T. sold the land to Win. That could blow the whole project up. But the bottom line is, I can't support a motion that directly affects litigation that the city of Revere is involved with. I think it's counterproductive. My colleague, Councilor Patch, mentioned a lot of things, including the community mitigation agreement that we're all subject to, that any contiguous community is subject to. So we're protected by that. If we're successful in the appeal, there will be no Win Casino, and there may still possibly be a casino at Suffolk Downs. It's, again, my colleague to my right talked about the HCA agreement, and that we're still being reimbursed by Mohegan Sun for all project expenses. And so for me to support this would be, I think would be counterproductive. It's just, it's, it's not helpful to the city's chances of succeeding in the appeal. So for that reason, I certainly cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zambudo. Councilor Riordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I should point out, as has been already stated, we're in a difficult situation here, where certainly, if some, if a casino does get built in Everett, we're going to be looking to be mitigated in some way, shape, or form. And I think this issue is best pressed at the proper time and with the proper authority, which presumably is the Gaming Commission. Now, the Gaming Commission has made dozens of exceptions, as we all know, to their own rules and regulations to benefit the Win project. It's documented. It's unequivocal. And to the extent that, that a mitigation agreement, certainly within the, the original confines of the, of the casino legislation, was the power of the commission to impose, I think at some point, we may be in a situation to demand that it is done, that is done. And it would be entirely unfair to suggest that we, as a supporter of an applicant in our own community, should somehow have been in a situation where we were asking the opponent, or the proponents of it and the neighboring city, to somehow award us mitigation at the same time we're supporting it. It's insane. So it was, that was totally unfair. I assume that those who drafted the legislation never considered the fact that there would be competing interests, neighborhood, neighboring competing interests involved in this situation. But that's what happened. I would agree with my other colleagues to, that suggests that the timing of this, at least, is not proper right now. This matter is still in litigation. At some point, the litigation will end. And if the, if the litigation fails, if the other questions that have been presented to the governor and, and other authorities have not overcome Win's licensing agreement, then the casino presumably will be built in Everett. But only until that time. And I don't believe really that there is any great necessity right now of requesting that we have a job fair for a edifice that's going to take probably a minimum of two and a half years to be built, that a shovel hasn't even gone in the ground yet. There will be much time and plenty of time to seek redress on this. And I think we certainly will be in a position, at least as good a position now as we would be in the future, rather, in the future as we are now, to demand it. So I, honestly, it's very difficult to suggest that we are litigating against it and at the same time asking for favors from the, from, from the, from the defendant. So, or, or the, certainly from the, from the commission, the Gaming Commission. But at some time, at some point, I believe that this issue will be ripe. But I think it should be directed more specifically at the commission, because they have the authority to force just about anything they want to do. It's pretty obvious that they've pretty taken, pretty well taken carte blanche to anything that they feel is proper, is proper. And we can, we will be in a much better position to demand proper treatment in the future once this litigation has ended. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Riordan. Councilor Novosovski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I don't totally disagree with this, but let me say this. Mayor Rizzo is working for the citizens of Revere right now. By filing this litigation to stop the Win construction and the Win package is my sign of him working for the citizens of Revere. Win has offered all the employees at Suffolk an opportunity to work over there. He has made that public. And my biggest thing is how much little faith I have in the Gaming Commission. They have not been true to their word in anything, as my colleagues on my left have stated. They've done everything to hurt us, and I can't see them coming back and helping us. So with that, Mr. President, I don't know what your plans are, whether you're going to allow a vote on this, or if you're going to put it in committee. But I would suggest that we put it into the Economic Development Committee, discuss it, and see what we want to do with this, and, and work on it within our own committees. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Novosovski. Councilor Ganasso? How soon we forget our friends, huh?
You don't know my name, Andre. Yes. Well, my sense in reading on this is very simple. We're in litigation with an individual who, number one, is a very, very hard man to deal with to begin with. My gut reaction would be that he would toss this in the closest barrel as soon as possible. But I don't, I think we're losing the sense of teamwork here, that we're collectively, we're on the same game path that we were trying to achieve for our community by getting a casino in Revere, because we knew it was good for our community. Okay, that came up shot. We now have an opportunity, and as recently as Saturday, I had the opportunity to speak with Mayor Walsh from Boston. And he feels very, very strong about the litigation that the city of Boston is offering out. And he has deep reserves in his own, when his legal staff has told him on many occasions, that they have a tremendous opportunity to defeat this proposal in Everett. Now, I agree with everybody on both sides of this issue. Number one, I think that the comment, that this go to economic development for further hearing and review with the mayor and the staff that helped us get this thing together. But put that aside, I think we have an opportunity here. But I think, I have to just believe that there's, and there's no help from the Gaming Commission. Because they, I just can't, I've been to every hearing that they conducted. I watched how they deliberated. I watched how they reacted when the people were speaking before them. They were paying no attention. Win was... WIN was actually ridiculing the whole process, and we were bowing down every time. People from Mohegan Sun were doing everything by the letter of the law. They weren't listening. They had no intention to hear our case. They just put us through the motions of this effort. This was predetermined, in my opinion, and I've watched people deliberate for many, many years. This was a done conclusion from the beginning. But I think we have an opportunity here to address this further in the courts. I think the courts will hear us out. I think the courts have no choice but to hear it out. If you read the verbiage from the suit that the city of Boston has, they stress some very, very serious legal issues here. Very, very serious, that have to, someone has to listen to these. You just can't fluff them off. The Gaming Commission doesn't have to hear a legal side. They're a commission. They just make a decision with no recourse to anybody, another huge mistake by the legislature, giving five people the opportunity to do as they saw fit without any oversight. But I should stress very strongly that we act as a team, we not fall apart within. And I think we have a great opportunity, when it's our day in court, and Boston's day in court, to defeat soundly the proposal in Everett based on many, many criterias that weren't met. We met every criteria possible. They got us on one issue. We didn't have enough money. We didn't, we weren't big enough. We were plenty big to do the proposal at Suffolk Downs, plenty big, but they were predetermined. I can't say what I think publicly of those individuals because they did a disservice to the whole community and the state of Massachusetts because they didn't uphold the job that they were appointed to. So I feel very strongly that we should just put aside this, go into economic development, talk it over with the mayor and his administration, speak to the issues, and I still think that WIN would get this particular request and toss it as soon as he sees it. Because knowing the individual that I have over the last two years, he's one honorary cowboy, and he just sticks to what he wants to do, and he plays by his own rules, and he's a billionaire, and he lets everybody know that. So, Mr. President, I ask that this go to the Economic Development Subcommittee for further review. And so we, as a team, the city of Revere and the administration, again, could be united in the effort to possibly get a casino here, but at least prevent it from going to Everett. That was an injustice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Ganaso. Farmer Councilor Rotundo, you'd like to have a comment on this?
I'd like to, thank you.
Brevity would be in place here this evening?
Of the essence. George Rotundo, 675 Beach Street. Actually, I support the motion. Frankly, if you take a look at the track record at this point regarding litigation and WIN, every time they failed, and WIN has prevailed. More importantly, the idea, and I look at it on my smartphone, as I'm sure everybody else can do, the economic woes that Arthur had spoke about still prevail with Mohegan Sun, and that horse has already left the barn. I really don't see them coming back to Revere. More importantly, one has to take a look at what is actually going on in Everett. WIN has acquired multiple, multiple properties. It only tells me this guy's ready to build. That said, I agree with Councilor Novoseltsky. Steve Wynn did say that he would help the Suffolk Downs employees by putting this forward and requesting that you have a job fair. Does allow that. Whether you want to debate the issues of legality of it or whether you want to deal with the issues of mitigation or litigation, that's a different issue. But I would hope that you would all honor the idea of asking him for a job fair, for the very least, the union workers and the people at Suffolk Downs. And thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Farmer Councilor Rotundo. This is my take on it. I am going to send this to the Economic Development Subcommittee, but I'm going to ask the chairman, Bob Hess, to have several meetings on this. And I would hope that if and when, and I hope it doesn't happen, if and when a shovel goes in the ground in Everett, even for a potter party, or ribbon cutting of any type, that this council collectively act in the best interest of the city of Revere and reach out to Mr. Wynn to make sure that Revere does get some jobs. We have a lot of talented workers in this city, construction workers, clerical workers, and what have you. And I think that we should be right out there looking to get those workers in this, jobs in this city so that they can support their families. Thank you very much. This is going to Economic Development Subcommittee.
Point of information.
State your point.
My colleague to the left said Mayor Rizzo is working for the citizens of Revere. This isn't about, this isn't the makers of the motion versus the mayor of Revere. No one is questioning the integrity of the mayor or whether he's working hard for the citizens or not. There is no doubt in my mind that he is working hard for the citizens of Revere, but my, this is my point of information. I'm telling you my point of information. This is the information I'm giving. So it's my point of information. So, before I was rudely interrupted by my colleague over here, this is not about the makers of the motion versus the mayor of Revere. It's about the makers of the motion providing an opportunity for the citizens, and that's all. I just want to state my point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Maravito. Councilor Arigo, I'll allow one more.
I've only had one, Mr. President, so this is my second. I just want to mention that we're talking about writing a letter. We're not talking about an agreement. We're not talking about signing on the dotted line. We're not talking about giving our souls to Steve Wynn. We're talking about writing a letter and opening a line of communication that should have been opened two years ago. So we're not, I mean, the legality of it, and the Mass Gaming Commission has, as has been alluded to before, is they're making it up as they go. So there's nothing that precludes us from getting a surrounding community agreement. They could, you know, wave their magic wand and decide that we can get one. And the way that they're, the way the legislation was written, they're allowed to do that. And they're allowed to pretty much do anything that they want, and they've done that. And I just want to remind everybody that we're talking about a letter. We're talking about an open line of communication to protect the residents of Revere, to protect the finances of the city, and to protect the businesses in Revere. $125 million to spend a year, and nobody is going to, nobody in Revere is going to be able to get that. I mean, we paid honor to Joe Bianco earlier today, tonight, and I can't think of a better sausage place, and I can't think of a better sausage vendor. And the fact that we're saying, no, we don't want to, we don't even want to open up the line of communication, it makes me shake my head and not understand what the motivation would be to not, we have nothing to lose on this. We have nothing to lose, and we're in litigation with the Mass Gaming Commission. This has nothing to do with necessarily, nothing to do with Steve Wynn in our litigation. So people need jobs. Our unemployment rate is up over 6 percent, way above the state average, and we have nothing to lose here. And I think, I look forward to a further discussion in economic development if that's going to happen. I would hope that we have, we bring everybody to the table. Thank you.
State your point, Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are, as I mentioned before, Revere is contractually prohibited by the HCA for entering a host of surrounding community agreement with any other gaming company. That would probably leave us open for litigation from Mohegan Sun if we do that.
Well, Councilor Patch and my colleagues, I, I'm not so much interested in entering into an agreement. I just want Mr. Wynn to know that we have talented people in this city who are ready and willing to go to work at a moment's notice, people that need jobs to support their families, and people that are talented. This is going to economic development. No further business. The next meeting will be the 8th of June at 6:00 PM. Thank you.